Convening the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting on July 3rd, 6:04 PM.
There's a quorum? There's four of us here?
The 5th?
One more time?
The 5th, July 5th?
Oh yeah, I read the wrong thing. July 5th.
I mean, I'd take a few days back, but...
Okay, um, let's just start. Um, we start with our announcements, but we have a new member, so we can do some intros. Hi, Lindsay Britt. Um, I recognize you. I went to a, um, a nonprofit's meeting a few months ago and saw your staff member there, so, um... But, um, maybe I'll take the lead, not to put the new person on the spot. Um, I'm Tom Mosakowski, and I've been on the Planning Commission for and a half years, been the chair for a couple, and, um, in Brattleboro for maybe five and a half years, and, um, I love the work. That's all I feel like saying now. People can say whatever if they want.
Uh, I'm Todd Richardson. Me too, and when I sound like a frog, it's natural. And, uh, this is my first year, uh, in this term, I think, on the, um, Planning Commission, and nice to meet you. Oh, I'm looking this way, right?
Steve Hayes is the only person who does that.
Yeah, but Colbert, gotta think Colbert.
Yeah, how about Sarah?
This is my turn. Um, hi, Lindsay, nice to meet you. Sarah, um, I joined the Planning Commission in January of this year. I've lived in town for about six years and new mom, um, so, you know, operating on a few hours of sleep, but more than, you know, a couple of weeks ago, so clever folk, I suppose.
Lindsay?
Nice to meet you all. Um, my name is Lindsay. Uh, my husband and I moved, uh, here to Brattleboro, uh, just about three years ago. Um, and I grew up in western Massachusetts. Uh, I have a degree in regional planning from UMass. Worked in planning for a while, served on the Conservation Commission down in Amherst, Massachusetts. So, looking forward to serving here now and seeing how things happen here.
Lindsay, when did you graduate?
Um, I graduated from the master's program at UMass, uh, at the end of 2010.
Oh, nice. Yeah, I also, um, I got a dual degree, but one of them was in, um, MRP at UMass.
Nice.
Cool. Fellow U-Masser.
Yes.
And two more in this, in this room.
Unmute yourself.
Oh yeah, you don't need to.
But there's two more UMass graduates in this room.
Oh, right. Yeah, and let's hear from staff.
Go ahead, Stu. You can introduce yourself.
Oh, sure. Could probably be heard, right?
Yeah, you can be seen.
I already know Lindsay, um, but I am Steve Hayes, the, um, planning technician. Uh, I believe we met for a, uh, conceptual review of a zoning application one time.
Hey, you again.
I also know, uh, Eric from the Planning Commission.
Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission.
Hi, Lindsay. Um, I'm Sue Fillion. I know we met, uh, about a month ago at a planning event for the Center Congregational Church. So, I'm so pleased that you decided to, uh, put your name in for the Planning Commission. We have two other members on the Planning Commission who aren't here this evening, uh, both who've got planning backgrounds as well. Dan Handy, who might be able to join us in a little bit, and Lina Menard, so, who won't be with us this evening.
Yeah, we're starting to build up our credentials as an experienced body.
Not that it's a requirement.
Trained, a trained body, yeah. Yeah, Lindsay, feel free, um, during this meeting to stop us and say, hey, what's going on? I'm confused. Or any kind of newbie questions or experienced questions, you know, whatever, whatever comes to mind.
Thank you.
And then definitely, uh, feel free to reach out to staff and/or myself or, or other individual commission members, just questions or ideas or, you know, kind of to get oriented, and maybe I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, that would be great. And I will be here for the whole meeting, but I am gonna both mute and turn off my video to eat my dinner at present. So, but I'll be here and be listening, and I'll chime in if, if so needed.
Okay. So, how about announcements? I think, um, we may want to, um, be updated on, um, our proposed land use regs, um, amendments.
It's a call order, just to be, uh...
Called the order? Well, I said the meeting began. I use a synonym for call order.
It's my only chance to act bureaucratic right there.
I need a gap. I'll answer everyone if they remember it. I think, um, the Select Board's gonna hold two public hearings of, um, the proposed amendments. We've sent them. And, um, the first one will be on the 11th, and the next one is scheduled to be...
July 25th.
July 25th. So, yeah, once again, I'll say I think it'd be helpful for, um, Planning Commission commissioners, especially the ones of us who have been involved in this process, to, um, try to attend those meetings, because sometimes the Select Board, um, from what I saw two years ago, you know, I had some questions about some of them and wanted to know more of the rationale. And sometimes I think that can be hard for, uh, staff or, you know, just, or myself, maybe, to be able to recall every single, you know, rationale. And not to say I know the rationale that went through everyone's heads, but you can at least, help give some bandage point to them of why, why we supported, um, certain amendments. Um, and then, Sue, could you update us on the, um, the Better Connections grant that we got? And we're doing this Canal Street corridor plan with it?
Yeah, so, um, that's slowly moving forward. We still don't have the grant agreement from the state, but, um, I do expect to have that by the end of the month. And so, um, I have had a meeting with the state partners that are involved, um, in the project, and I'm working on an RFP. So that once we have the grant agreement in place and the Select Board signs off on it, that we can go out to our, to find a consultant to work with us.
Okay. Forgive me if I'm blanking, but did we, did we talk, we've done some, some of these grants we've done, um, the Planning Commission has had, a good amount of involvement, and some of them, we felt, for, you know, various reasons, that it's gonna be more led by staff. How did, did we talk about that?
We didn't really talk about this. I mean, we will be having a steering committee, um, which I would love to have Planning Commission represent, representation. I mean, I think August would be a good time to talk about this.
Okay.
Some more, just because it'll be a little bit more shaped.
And when the RFP is being crafted, okay.
Yeah.
Well, great. Um, and Lindsay, we could fill you in another time about that, um, or at the August meeting will be a good time. We'll, we'll give some background about that, that project. Are there any other announcements?
Yeah, I have, um, one other announcement that, um, on July 13th, it's a Thursday, from 4:30 to 6:00, at 250 Burge Street, that's the, um, floodplain restoration site, that if you, um, like, if you're on Canal Street and you go down Borough Street, you just keep going until you hit the Wetstone Brook. That, that large parcel down on the Wetstone Brook, there's going to be a, um, kind of a community celebration. The staff from the Vermont River Conservancy will be there, Town, uh, Brian Bannon and myself will be there. We're just gonna kind of go over the project a little bit, and, uh, we're anticipating that the floodplain restoration will get underway, uh, a little bit later this summer. Um, there's plans for some, um, walking passive recreation area there. Wetland restoration, floodplain restoration. So, if you wanna come hear about the project, head, head out. It's 4:30, there's gonna be remarks and a tour at 5, from 5:00 to 6:00. I know there's another Conservation Commission kind of event that evening, a little bit later, so you can make it a night of conservation. So, you can pass these out, um, and make sure that, uh, those who are joining online get a copy of the invitation.
Thank you. What was the date on that?
It's Thursday, July 13th, 4:30 to 6:00, with, um, some refreshments and mingling, starting at 4:30, and remarks and a tour, uh, at 5:00.
That's a great project.
Yeah, I think ever since I joined the Commission at the end of 2018, occasionally, this project has been, um, I don't know how much the Commission has actually had a say in this project, but Sue has definitely brought it up to us as, um, to keep us in the loop. Maybe we've been able to, we've offered comments at a couple of stages, right?
Yeah. It was in our Brownfields program, so around that time, you know, there was environmental assessment going on, so Planning Commission was kept abreast of that, and, yeah.
Sarah, saw your hand up.
Um, I guess two, like, strong-town-related things. Um, next week, Sue and I and Tom, maybe if, if you're able to join, um, are speaking to one of the, um, staff members who wants to, like, do an article on Brattleboro based on winning the, um, strongest-town contest, and, um, I think they have a staff person coming beginning of August, Sue, to...
Beginning of August. He hasn't nailed down the dates with me yet. I...
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, well, it is interesting, because I do really need to reach back out to him, because he'll take vacation in the second week, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, you know, one of the things we get as being voted the strongest town is a, uh, professionally-made, you know, video about our town, so, um, if you see any of the Strong-Town videos on YouTube, I think he, he is the guy who's, the guy who's coming to make the Brattleboro one is the one who does the, the ones that you see on YouTube, and they're, they're very well done, so, August sometime. Um, but yeah, excited to sort of see that, um, continue on.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks for updating us on that, Sarah, and just to fill Lindsay in, um, Lindsay, Sarah, um, founded this competition and kind of got us, got the ball rolling with, um, applying Brattleboro to that competition.
I did my part by voting.
Oh, great. So you know all about it.
Okay, if there are no more announcements, let's move on to the organizational meeting. This is, uh, once a year, we do it in July, and it's for the, um, you know, the necessary statutory stuff of electing officers and reviewing our bylaws. In some ways, I think I thought this last year too, and I should've switched the agenda this time, but, um, seems like electing officers before we potentially review what the officer roles are in the bylaws. Maybe it should be flipped.
Oh.
But everyone had the bylaws to review and had fans. But, um, certainly if people have questions or need clarity about what the roles of Chair, Vice-Chair, Clerk do, um, please speak up. But I'll just quickly say that the Vice-Chair does nothing, except in the Chair's absence. If the Vice-Chair wants to take on more of a role and, like, be part of planning the agendas or something, you know, I, I assume the next Chair will be open to that. And then the Clerk has a few, um, three roles specified in the bylaws, but the whole time I've been on the Commission, the elected Clerk hasn't done anything in accordance with the Clerk role, and staff has just, they've, um, delegated all that role to staff. But perhaps maintaining and cleaning up the Google Drive E folder, because I've kind of, um, I'm not as inspired to, uh, or motivated to work on that as I was when, you know, it first got going two years ago. That possibly could be something for them. But anyway, um, I think the plan is, um, that, uh, we look for nominations for these roles. Um, we can do one at a time, like the Chair and then vote, and the Vice-Chair and vote, and the Clerk then vote. Or, um, if there's only one nomination for each, then we just do it as a slate. People can self-nominate, and there's no need to, um, accept a nomination, but certainly if you don't want it, you can reject it. That's the wording. You can decline it. So let's start with Chair.
Well, I'd like, uh, before this meeting started, we want on record, I actually separately asked Tom if, uh, he would be willing to do this again, um, for the next term, because I think he's done an excellent job. So, um, so I nominate Tom.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Okay, um, how about any nominations for Vice-Chair?
Can we nominate people who aren't here?
We can, yeah, and what do you have in mind?
I was gonna nominate, um, sorry, how do you pronounce the name, Lina?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Fantastic. Um, she's actually, um, she offered, um, a couple emails on, you know, she reviewed everything before this meeting. She's away, and she, um, she responded, and one of her things would say that if she was nominated as Chair, she would accept.
Oh, which is great.
Vice-Chair. Oh, sorry.
Oh, good. All right.
Yeah, and I don't think you were included in that, in that email, Sarah, so...
I, I felt it.
Yeah, right, well, she felt it too. Okay. Any other nominations for Vice-Chair?
Okay, any nominations for Clerk?
Can I, I just wanna clarify that there are duties associated with Clerk that, that Tom mentioned. We've been asked, you know, we've been advised that we should keep the Clerk role in there, but it is something that staff, you know, does, does handle for now. I can imagine a scenario where we're out sick and somebody needs to take minutes. But even that is probably not so likely, because it's taped and we could do it after the fact, so it really is largely ceremonial as well.
Well, since Todd seems to be the one who shows up in person the most, so I nominate Todd to be the Clerk.
Well, since, uh, since it sounds like I don't have to know a whole lot to do it, and, and I live about two hundred yards away, then I'd, I'd accept that.
Sure. Okay, um, I'll repeat the nominations. Myself for Chair, Lina for Vice-Chair, and Todd for Clerk. Let's do it as a slate, so there's all together. Can people say if they're in favor for that or against it? Um, Todd?
Uh, in favor.
Okay. People can say aye and nay or whatever. Sarah?
Aye.
And Lindsay?
Aye.
And for myself, aye. Okay, um, let's now move on to reviewing the bylaws. And it said, "and rules of procedure." Um, we kind of just copied that from last year. In the interim, we, we merged the two documents.
Yeah.
I could go through with my, um, the proposed changes that I offered. But we also, I don't know, I don't know if we wanna do, in past years, we did a little run-through. I mean, if everyone read it, I...
Already.
Yeah, again, an hour ago. Maybe, maybe just general questions about, about the bylaws? Or Sue?
Can I just interrupt really quickly? Lindsay, were you able to find all the materials for the meeting?
No, good question.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry I didn't check in with you. I'd been out for a couple of days, so... Okay. Just wanted to make sure she had them all.
Yeah, no, good question. That's the best way to test the, the integrity and ease of our, our links and, you know, prompts and Google Drive folder, to see if people for the first time actually find it easy, accessible. Okay, well, um, seeing a hand up, I'll just, um, go through and, uh, on page three, I struck. And so these are just proposals or conversation starters. I struck the part that says, anyway, under Section 6, Regular Meetings, it says that regular meetings start at 6:00 PM on the first Monday of each month and shall end at 8:00 PM, but I struck the ending at 8:00 PM. And then likewise, I struck the whole procedure for proceeding beyond 8:00 PM on the last page, page five, because without a, defined, um, end time or strict end time, then there's no need to have a strict procedure after that. And my thinking there was, um, I mean, I'm split on this. I, I just thought it was something worth talking about. Um, a lot of other boards and commissions and committees don't have strict end times. It's kind of useful to have one. It's nice. You can be really, you can really help predict when you'll be busy with this meeting.
We can kick it around the fly, but, I mean, if it went till nine, any member could, uh, propose, you know, could, uh, propose ending it.
Right.
So it's still flexible. Yeah, I don't have a problem with pulling that.
Well, any member could end it.
Propose.
Could propose, and then it would need a, a majority.
Right.
Four of the seven of the, of the Commission would need four to, um, to adjourn the meeting before the, this, the agenda's, um, business has been completed. But if business has been completed, then, then I can just adjourn it with no, with no Chair, you know? People's thoughts? Sarah, Lindsay?
Um, I personally like having an end time. You know, I think generally with an end time, it, at least there's the, the goal of, like, keeping business within those two hours. Uh, you know, I think, like any sort of town commission, there sometimes can be the tendency to, to go off on tangents and, um, which is enjoyable sometimes. But having that end time, at least for me, is like, okay, well, I know at least we're done at eight, you know? And there's not sort of this question mark of like, how long is this gonna go on? And at least it helps for, like, schedule, scheduling and that kind of stuff, so, um, you know, I think, Tom, if you're striking it just to, like, get rid of kind of the procedural stuff that happens at the end, then I would maybe suggest just keeping it, um, for the reasons I suggested, but open to whatever everyone else. Thanks.
Thoughts, Lindsay? I know you haven't been a part of this, but you've been on other, other boards and bodies.
I have. Uh, I don't particularly care whether it says in the bylaws that the meeting has to end by a certain time. I'm just a big proponent of having agendas that have end times and sticking to the time limits within agendas, so... If, if there are meetings that need to go longer, I think that sometimes that's the case, and that can be okay. But I do think it's important to have, uh, end, end times and to stick to agenda timelines.
That's interesting, because, um, I think what I've found, um, at least while I've been Chair, is that, you know, we have these time estimates for each agenda item, and, and been trying to stick with those, but that's actually more challenging than actually sticking with the end time. We, we almost always do end at 8:05, or 8:10, um, or eight a few times. Um, a couple of times, it's, it's gone to like 8:30, when, but we've kind of known in advance and maybe give, give it a heads-up that it was gonna go a bit over and hopefully prepare everyone. I'm trying to think, I know they're not here, but what, um, Lina and Dan might say, and I think, I think they would be on the side of liking it.
I think Lina did say she did, she was questioning why it was confusing, so I think she did like it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Dan is one that's a bit time-constrained, so...
Yes, yeah. Well, like I said, I'm split, but I guess since, since that's a proposed, um, amendment, we have to vote on that. There's other proposed amendments, um, and maybe we could take those separately. But I, I just wanted to kind of put, put something on, I don't know if that's the right phrase, but put a log on the fire and see how it burns, so, um... So, how about the motion is, um, to, um, accept the two proposed changes regarding the end time, you know, striking the, the defined end time and the, and the procedure about, um, moving beyond it. What do people, do you want more discussion?
It looks like we need separate strikeouts in that?
Oh, I'll just take those, the two below aren't part of the procedure.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's more of just a cleaning up thing. What do, um, can we, can we vote on this? On that element of my proposed changes?
Do you need a second?
Yeah, I do.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, how about Todd?
I think it's flexible. I'd propose, I'd, I'd accept those changes. Yay.
Okay, and Sarah?
Yeah, I think if, you know, we're, if the goal is to, you know, not go on for hours and hours, but like generally end by eight, then, you know, I think if striking that makes it easier on, you know, running the meeting, um, great, I'm, I'm for it.
Oh, I wasn't, I don't know if I can discuss in the middle of voting, but I personally wasn't saying that it would make the meeting easier to run, just that...
Sure, that was my interlocution.
Lindsay?
Sure, yay.
This is funny. I kind of meant this proposed change as like a conversation starter, and I, and I think everyone's thinking that I really wanted to see this. So I think since this vote actually needs four ayes to pass, I'm gonna vote nay on it.
He was, I guess, part of trouble.
That whole process was kind of weird, sorry. If people wanna talk to me about that later, or if they wanna see a change, let me know. But, um, yeah, anyhow, so the other change is, is that in Section 13, I was looking at what it suggested for Order of Business, and, um, we never really do agenda review. Um, I think we still can do it when we want in the beginning of the meeting, you know, by Robert's rules, if things need to be shifted or, um, swapped around.
Or something added, maybe.
Or certain things subtracted, but you can't really add new, new, you can't add new, um, stuff to a meeting.
Maybe it called order, so they could break their hand if they had, make issue with something.
Yeah, yeah. And then the communications part at the end, I don't, I don't know, is that public comment?
No, it wasn't public comment. I think it's like if you got a letter or that kind of thing.
Oh.
It's probably an older.
Yeah, like an old wording. So I felt removing those two actually resembles what we do at meetings more so. I mean, I guess one could nitpick and, you know, actually call anything old and new business, but we do do that, so... And then down in Section 14, I just struck those two, um, bold parts, Supporting Documentation and Philопarticipation, just because no other, like, subsection has a bolded beginning, and it's clear what's, those paragraphs are about. Yeah. Just to keep the format. Um, so for those remaining proposed changes, I'm, I'm suggesting, any, um, well, to follow Robert's rules, I move that we accept those.
Yeah, there is that separately this time. You wanna, that's fine with me.
Well, I'm just saying, that's my motion, and then if there's a second, then we can do the discussion.
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, Todd seconds, and then we can do any discussion about those, um, those little strikeouts, if there is any. If not, um, let's do, well, we don't need to do the roll call. Um, I think that was really just important for liking the officers.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's all four of us, okay. Oh, wait, I did one more thing. Where was the thing?
Section 15. Amending the bylaws.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm through in my draft.
I don't see anything marked in Section 15 of mine.
Your PDF did.
Oh, now look at my PDF.
And it just shows no highlights at least.
Oh, it's hard.
Do you want me to read it?
Um, sure.
So, uh, this is the section on amending the bylaws, in case Lindsay and Sarah don't see it. It says, "These bylaws may be amended at any meeting of the Planning Commission, provided that said proposed amendment is provided to each member in writing at least five days prior to said meeting." And Tom is proposing that it be amended to, "These bylaws may be amended at any meeting of the Planning Commission, provided that said proposed amendment is circulated to commissioners and made available to the public no later than the Friday of the week before the meeting." So, it, it takes away that five-day advance thing, which is always awkward when we get to this annual meeting and, you know, somebody wants to make an amendment, but we can't really take care of it at this meeting, so...
I think back a few years ago, when, when we didn't have a policy that, um, supporting documentation for an agenda item be provided, you know, shared with commissioners or in the, in the E folder by the Friday before the meeting, then sometimes we'd get things just like a few hours before the meeting, and so that maybe was, you know, a little too, um, hasty if someone had, or too short notice if someone had a bylaw proposal change. But, um, but the, so I think the five days maybe was put in place how many, however many years ago to address that. But now we have a, a policy in place that supporting docs be shared the Friday before the meeting, which in this case is actually five days before this Wednesday meeting, but usually that would just be three days before the meeting. And so if that's good for all other of our agenda-supporting docs, it seems to me like that was a good idea for bylaw-proposed changes as well. And I do see in the email that I sent to all of you that, that that amendment came through.
I, I saw it on my computer and remembered a reading with, it's just not showing up on PDF or something, but...
Are there any questions about that, if, if that does or doesn't make sense, or what do people think? Okay, this is the last proposed amendment to vote on. Would you like to take it away, Tom?
Oh, true. Uh, I propose that, uh... Oh, true, uh, I propose that we uh vote on this uh striking of this wording.
Mm-hmm, and adding the new wording.
And the new wording, thank you.
Okay.
Seconds?
I second that. Okay, um, if there's any actual according to Robert's rules procedure, proper discussion now, get it in quick, because I'm going to ask who's in favor. Please put your hand up if so. Okay, that's all four of us. Great, we can move um on from the bylaws. Um, we're gonna have a little um talk about open meeting law, I think Sue or Steve is going to run through that for us.
Yes, so um, I'll just run through a couple of things on open meeting laws, some things that um you might have questions about. So the open meeting law is state statute, um, and the intent of the law is to create transparency in government by requiring advanced public notice and opportunity for public participation in government decisions. Um, and so there's a couple of requirements of open meeting law, it's providing advanced notice of meetings, uh, the agenda for regular and special meetings, um, conducting all business in an open meeting. This is saying roll call vote when there is electronic participation, so we were doing that tonight.
Yeah, true, certainly.
Um, allowing public comments at a meeting, taking and posting minutes, and responding to any complaints of an open meeting violation. And so the open meeting law applies to every public body, so whether it's a commission, committee, board, um, you know, select board, any subcommittee of the municipality. And it applies, open meeting law applies whenever there is a quorum of of a body that's meeting. And so a quorum is a is the majority of the total members of the body, not those that are just present. So the planning commission is a seven member body, therefore a quorum is for a meeting.
No smoking, Tom?
Sorry.
No, I don't see, authorized employees only, that's all it says.
Sorry, that's somebody in the hallway talking, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um Okay, close that there, yeah, I'll check on that. Um, so what does it, what is not a meeting for the purposes of the law? So if there's written correspondence or electronic communication, including email, telephone, teleconferencing between members of the select of the body for the purpose of scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda, or distributing materials.
There's a gentleman here.
That, that is not, I'm sorry, I'm distracted. So, yeah, so if we're if we're emailing correspondence, you know, to schedule a meeting, create an agenda, or um distribute materials that are going to be discussed at the meeting, that is not an open meeting. However, we still need to have those materials available under the public records. Um, so a couple of things about communication to really email. Group emails don't necessarily violate open meeting law. Again, if we're scheduling a meeting, creating an agenda, or distributing materials to discuss, um, then those are not, uh, that's not a violation of open meeting. However, you know, if you're sending me an email, I generally have to have them available if somebody was asking about it. Um, and it's also why like the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and the Secretary of the State's Office also recommend, don't don't hit reply all, because you never know, you you could cross into easily having something that falls under a meeting, so. Let's see, if a member is not able to attend a meeting, can they vote by email or proxy? And the answer is no on that. You can participate, you know, by phone or by teleconferencing, but you cannot um have a proxy vote just in writing. Let's see, we do need to have an agenda for every regular or special meeting, so. And we have to post that agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance for a regular meeting, so, you know, we're usually posted about a week and a half beforehand. Actually, that's been our procedure, materials come closer too, but um, so staff takes care of that. Let's see, um so we can, with things that are listed on the agenda, obviously we can postpone that, um, or table something on the agenda at any time. But if we want to add something to an agenda, um, it can only be done as the first order of business. So, you know, that agenda review, at any time you could add something, it's really needs to be used very carefully, like if something came up last minute that needs quick action, otherwise it's not good practice to just put something on the agenda that's not been warned for the public to participate, so. Really, only if it's an unforeseen occurrence or something that needed immediate action. Um, I'm not going to go through posting because staff does that, we posted in a bunch of places on the website to the media. We also take the minutes, which is a requirement of open meeting law, we have to make the minutes available for inspection five days after the meeting, so. Let's see, they don't have to be, you know, really long full transcript of a meeting, uh, but they do need to cover people that were there, um, motions, proposals, resolutions, um, and what the vote was on any of those. The planning commission, I mean, unless you want to talk about exceptions to open meeting law, the planning commission, in my time with the planning commission, has never had a need to go into executive session for any reason. The statute does lay out the situations where you can use executive decision. The planning commission is not a deliberative body like the development review board, so you can't go into deliberative session in that way either, so. Unless you want to hear more about them, that, you know, I'm happy to answer those questions. Let's see, if we have, if if somebody alleges a violation of open meeting law, then basically we would contact the town attorney, and then we would also um need to respond in writing to the alleged violation, and we'd have ten days to do that. So if something like that happened, we'd have to have a special meeting. And basically, you know, you you respond with, uh, you know, if it was inadvertent, you can say that, you can say what you're gonna do to rectify it. If it was, you know, a real oops, um, then, you know, there might be other ways that you look at rectifying that, like nullifying decisions or that kind of thing, so you can do that in an open meeting. So that's all I have to say about the open meeting law, but I'm happy to take questions if you've got something you want to know.
That's great, I personally don't, seems like Todd doesn't, no, Sarah, Lindsay?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Well, no vote needed for this sub agenda item. Moving on to um our webpage, um, I think this is good to put on here just to, you know, just call attention to every um, every year. It slacks, at least in my opinion, for a little bit with updating our current work. I don't have access to this webpage, staff does, you know, I mean, the the staff of town government is the one that runs the webpage, um, the website. And um, but for, at least for the planning commission webpage, Sue has been very receptive to my suggested changes. And as you see, I just updated our current work, um, just over a month ago, and um going down, I like to call attention to, last year I did this, the um, the just city values and the equity categories. It's a little interesting, because as we get farther away from two thousand twenty, when the planning commission worked on that, of which I'm the only, you know, member who was there then, who's here now. It starts being not necessarily inaccurate, but less less, um I mean, none of you did the the, you know, the, used the just city framework and, you know, did that. That was back when we had a different chair and Felicity and Sheila that, um, participated. So I guess what I'm looking for is, um, well, specific to those two things, those two subcategories, just if people like those or agree with them, or want, just more generally want those to stay on there, or if they want change, or them removed, or if um, they they want to see if they agree with those things, and then we'd have to, you know, have a have a meeting agenda item about that. And then just other general, um, any input about the webpage, if you'd like. So I'll open it up to the three other commissioners. And did Linda offer, um, I'll just say that Linda offered a comment that the webpage is not particularly inspirational, but conveys all the needed info for, you know, for how to access meetings and materials and what we do and and everything, so.
I I haven't, I don't look at that page very often, just our Google Drive, but it it's nothing strikes me that I remember, it's not particularly memorable page, I don't, I don't think, but it but it it's fine, you know.
I think with that colorful graphic, we actually may have one of the more memorable commissioner committee or webpages of on the whole town website. Yeah, Sue?
I just wanted to say that the town is working on a new webpage, and we are getting closer, I I don't know when it'll be, but for it to be launched and you know, things like the equity or the just value piece would probably, and, you know, some of our plans and other activities are probably would be converted into more of a blog post with a graphic. And so I think hopefully the next one will be more exciting, um, rather than just, you know, also, you know, the the kind of long string of things on the right hand side. It it will look different and hopefully be more engaging.
And in all fairness, it's not like we're making an entertainment site.
Exactly.
People who go to that site want information, you know.
Any um, any input, Lindsay or Sarah?
No, I was just gonna ask if the town was updating the website, because I had heard about that, so I'm glad to hear it's moving forward, I think it's needed.
No comment, I, that was, I was gonna say, I think the town's updating the website, so maybe not, you know, not doing anything major until maybe that happens, and then maybe we'll have some uh edits or, you know, suggestions after the fact, or once we see the new layout.
Okay. Um, moving, I see Dan's in the process of joining, but we'll move on to the um reviewing our Google Drive efolder. I just mean for this, well, so I included a um, just a screenshot of of my computer, um, well, sort of, when it saves the the website as a PDF, just of the the, when you open the folder and it shows all the subfolders. And um, well, before I offer a thought, I think I actually did earlier, um, but I'd just like to hear what people think. Or any comments about the Google Drive efolder, however you want to take it.
I would offer to do some organization, you you had talked about that earlier, for for CLERB to help out with that, and that's certainly something I consider my air conditioning and just put things by, you know, if I can help in any way with just doing the grunt work of of capitalizing things in any particular order that it thinks is helpful, you know, folders by time or subject or whatever. Also, happy to not not have anything to do with that whatsoever.
Yeah, okay.
Tom, can you remind me what the um, the like asterisks and the different symbols that those means?
So those symbols, yeah, thank you, those symbols are, because at at least when I view it, um, if it doesn't automatically put it in alphabetical order, which is calling name over there on the right, I set it to that, and I think maybe that's the way most people view things. And then so as such, I kind of utilize that to to organize things. So the um, the exclamation marks don't necessarily mean, hey, you know, this is an emergency, but it's just to bring those three subfolders to the front, to the top. And then the asterisks are more like um themes or projects, subject matters, um, all of those which I've lost some motivation and haven't been keeping up. Um, and then the ones without asterisks are just all of our meeting subfolders. And then the uh, the four files at the bottom seems to be important, just to also just have visible right on the in the main folder, because they might get kind of lost being in a subfolder. Or it it didn't seem too clear to me which subfolder put them in, and there's not too many of them, so it's just to put them right there, um, in the main folder.
Um, I will say, um, and, you know, happy to like have this not happen, but I'm typically a fan of like more folders, folder on upon folder, so, you know, like you were sort of saying, like, the asterisk means like certain topics, like, for me, I would prefer like a folder that's like whatever, like topic, you know, of concern or of interest, and then all those, you know, because I think, at least for like the main page of the planning commission's drive, it's just, there's like a lot, and, you know, I mean, Lindsay, maybe you can speak to this, but like, you know, I kind of felt like when I first opened it, when I joined, I was like, I don't even, like, I don't even know where to start.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, maybe use, like, instead of using the asterisks, like, actually labeling a folder, like, for what intention of that asterisk, like, or that grouping, um, is.
Yeah, okay, good idea, I think. Cindy, Lindsay, do you have um impressions, considering, you know, you're, you can offer very fresh ones?
Um, I organize Google Drives as part of my living, this looks fine to me, I don't like thinking about it all that much outside of my paper. If I see anything that I think is getting too far off track, then I I might speak up, but looks looks fine to me.
Dan, I don't know if you're connected enough now, do you have any thoughts on uh using or viewing the the Google Drive folder? Well, feel free to to jump in if you heard that, oh, okay, your video just, okay.
Uh, yes, hi, I'm trying to use video, but uh, I I think I would um suggest having some folder that, as uh Sarah was mentioning, with a top priority, or, you know, start here, or something like that also.
Okay.
Um
So, sorry for being late, by the way.
Okay, that's all right. I was gonna suggest actually maybe unfortunately doing away with what's currently the asterisk folders. Um, I think ideally, it's nice to have those, because people can see and get caught up on the different themes of work. But when I originally made those, and then for a few or several months after I originally made them, well, when I originally made them, I went back through like a year's worth of meetings or something, and like pulled all the 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 files from those meetings, which are also in the meeting folders, and put them in there, we talked about housing, put those there, you know, not necessarily everyone, the ones that seemed good to revisit, and then I tried keeping up with that the next few meetings, and then I just kind of just lost interest, you know, because in some ways it's kind of doubled up from the meeting folders, it is nice to have it by theme, but also that's yeah, so, I don't, you know, if people aren't using those themed folders very much, then it, or or not, or not at all, then it just doesn't seem worth having them. Potentially some of those documents and some of those could be added to another folder, just like useful resources, you know, and try to keep it really limited, but.
I um I don't want this to become another repository of what I already have on my server as well, and like, I feel like it's a lot for us to kind of maintain, I the asterisks, I feel like if it's something that we are working on, then then maybe, you know, it's the topic or whatever, and it's in there, but I don't kind of want to create a mirror there. Like, I look at retail cannabis zoning, we're past that, like, I don't think it needs to to stay in this drive, the public still has access to everything if they they really want to see it, so.
Yeah.
I would prefer to not have duplication all over the place, both in meeting materials and.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, and people should remember, to the extent that we can um keep the titles of documents well titled, they're all searchable.
And also like this plans zoning and studies, like, this stuff is all on the town website too.
Oh, right.
I know this is like a nice one place to get it, but again, it's just like loading up my storage all over.
Okay. Yeah, maybe so in the, in, if, if no one speaks up, uh, in favor of keeping those asterisked folders, notice that pause there. Then I'll, you know, I'll probably be reading those. But I heard the, uh, comments from Sarah and Dan and Todd. And I don't think any votes needed for this agenda at all. Just wanted to hear the input and get some direction. I think, did I cover the, um, the comments that Lena offered about the bylaws? They don't necessarily all to be addressed because, um, they weren't, you know, some of them were kind of fledgling or, or, or ventures at making amendments, but she would have to have provided that five days in advance. But, um, she said something about, what about removing the clerks and staff do it, Sue addressed that. And she's gonna be watching this, the recordings meeting afterwards, so that's another reason I'm bringing this up now. Oh, she said at section four, I'm sorry, I didn't cover this during bylaws. She said in section 4.3 where it says, um, something about, um, the role of administering the, um, the zoning bylaws, um, is also one of our powers to the extent that it's not delegated or, or given over to the Development Review Board, which it has in this town, so we don't do it. But she, she commented, shouldn't, should planning staff also be included in that description? Because they, they are administrators. I mean, Brian Bennett is the administrative officer.
So my guess is this comes directly from sta-, uh, statute and that it comes from the fact that, and it's probably written just like that in statute, I could check, but it comes from the fact that in some towns, the planning commission does have a regulatory, you know, review authority under Sec Plan Review. And so it's a, it's a little bit funny, Brattleboro has chosen the DRB route, so actually the planning commission doesn't do any of the, um, we don't administer any of the bylaws.
Yeah.
I don't really wanna change the, um, language of it because it mirrors statute.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's just if ever Brattleboro went back to a planning commission zoning board adjustment, which I don't see why they would.
In, in the towns where there, it's, there's only a planning commission, there's no DRB, there maybe often is also a staff administrator.
Sure.
Which once again, that, that line doesn't speak to. So that, that line's really just speaking to like the volunteer board power of administering. And whether the planning commission has it or it's given over to the DRB, that's all it speaks to, right? It's kind of, it can maybe it understood, it's understood that other statutes elsewhere, there is a definition of what the administrative officer does.
Yes.
Right? She, oh, this is, I thought this was a good one. She wrote, um, why is the organizational meeting in July? And seeing as we do it the first Mondays and July 4th is early in the month, being the 4th, then that may often complicate people being here. And at least in her case, I believe it did, um, this time. Can you tell us when other bodies might have your?
Everybody does in July with the exception of the select board. And the reason is, is that the select board makes appointments, uh, all terms on June 30th.
Oh.
So then you potentially have new members and so it's the first month. So all, with the, like I said, with the exception of the select board because they're voted in March. Everybody's organizational meeting is July.
Yeah. Well, five of the six of us are here and Linda did a good job commenting and stuff in her absence, so. But if someone wanted to propose a change, I guess, you know, that, that would be proposed to our bylaws. Okay, I think that's it. Great, so we're done with our organizational meeting. And let's move on to reviewing the June 5th minutes. We can make a motion, second it, and then have any discussion if there is some.
Um, I wasn't here at the meeting, so should I abstain or?
That's right, so we don't have enough.
Okay.
You don't have to, you can.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, he watched the recording.
Yeah.
But Lindsay wasn't aware of it.
I, yeah, I looked through the stuff, so.
Oh, okay, well. Well, I'll just make the motion to approve June 5th's minutes.
Yep.
Well, second. Did anything catch anybody's eye? Oh, yeah, we have Dan here now. Any, any issue with the minutes or, oh, there's the, there's the new planning commissioner. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I see Sarah, Todd, myself, Lindsay's abstaining, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, yep. And how about, how about Dan?
I'll vote aye.
Okay. All right, so moving on to, um, considering the implications of Act 47. It's the Vermont Legislature's Senate Bill 100. And it passed recently and, um, I guess staff and, but especially our consultant, Brandy Saxton, for the most recent project of, um, the bylaw modernization grant, looked through that and saw what changes we should make to our, to go along with our proposed changes to the land use regs that we're giving to the select board. And came up with a few suggestions, which are there in the, um, in our meetings folder. 2023, 614 memo. So, um, how should we do this? Did Sue or Steve, did you have anything to say about that and your other documents? Or should we just, um, take them one at a time or, or? Maybe not one at a time, but if, we'll just run through them all and see what people have questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to run through the ones from Brandy and then Steve has prepared a memo on, uh, on the other option?
Right. Yeah, let's go through the one with Brandy and then, and then we'll take a vote. If, if it sounds good to send all those or, you know, those modified to the select board.
Um, so the first one has to do with height. And the legislation is basically allowing, um, areas that have water and sewer to have an extra floor, um, you know, to, to add one more, uh, one more floor to the height regulations. And so this is, you know, this is required out of the legislation. It's not really an option, um, for us. However, you should be aware, we did raise heights in a lot of the districts and a lot of our developed districts beforehand. So, you know, where it had previously been, you know, maybe you could get four floors. Now you can get five, potentially six. So it's just an incremental way to actually, you know, have change over time. But it, it could be different. And, and we, we had discussed it at the time that it was in the legislation that actually if we raise it one floor, well, it could actually be two. So, uh, that is something, you know, that, that we have to come into compliance with.
And there is a definition of affordable housing in like statute or something, though?
There is.
Or in our, in our land use regs as well?
Yeah, in statute and, yeah.
It's well spelled out, it's all in that.
Okay. And then, uh, hotel or motel, um, this is again a change in state definition, where extended state provisions will not apply. So this is just coming into compliance. Sorry, I don't have the three or four, um, C in front of me, um, but I can pull that up if you wanna see it. Um, the 431 and 467, I wanna come back to those because Tom found, uh, kind of an inconsistency with statute in these. So I got some new proposed language for that, um, after looking into that today. Um, the definition of an interested persons has changed. Um, so that's the one on the bottom of the page, 531. Basically, it's any 10 people who may be a combination, any combination of Brattleboro voters, residents or landowners. So residents was added. So this, this brings it into compliance with what the legislation did. So that's one we, we need to make as well. In regards to decisions, um, there is some limitations on kind of the conditions that the DRB can, can put that came with the legislation. So, um, basically they can't require larger lot sizes than the minimums. They can't require more parking spaces than the minimums. They can't limit the building size due to, uh, not having, to less than the district maximum footprint or height. So, so these are all just clarifications. They can't limit residential density. So again, all things to kind of promote more housing. And then they can, so section, paragraph 466E, um, they can, sorry, I haven't really read this one. Has to do with the conditions of approval. And that they don't result in unequal treatment of housing. Um, so it's just some, some of the requirements on their decision-making for both of those. Back to section 431, um, and 467. So one of the criteria in conditional use review is looking at character of the area. And this legislation has put some limitations on appeals that are looking at character of the area. So in appeals to the administrative officer, I'm gonna share a different screen, which is the language that is served that is more in line with the statute. So if somebody is making an appeal of an administrative officer's decision, this is section 431 at the top. If, if the, there's, there's a couple of different definitions of interested persons. And one of them is that 10 voters, residents or property owners in Brattleboro. If, um, if 10, if 10 people get together that meet that definition, they cannot file an appeal, um, if it's an affordable housing care, uh, project. They can't file it based on character of the area. And so it's to limit, it's basically trying to limit appeals of people that really don't necessarily live in the area and kind of stop the N B stuff. In, in some ways, um, there's been some housing trust projects that have been appealed by people who don't, you know, who aren't a direct abuser. 10 people get together and they're saying it doesn't meet the character of the area test. And so, um, so that's, that's for the appeals of the administrative officer. And then further, so the next level of appeal, um, if you're appealing a DRB decision, a development review board decision, that goes to the environmental court. And there's a limitation on the character of the area as well if that project has a residential component and is located in the designated downtown or neighborhood development area. So these are areas where we're trying to promote housing because they have water and sewer utilities and they don't want, um, appeals of residential projects based on it doesn't fit the character of the area. Because if they've met the standards to be in the designated downtown or the neighborhood development area, then they are suitable for housing. So the environmental court won't hear an appeal, uh, based on character of the area. So those are the two, um, in addition to Brandy's other ones, these are the two that we would ask you to, um, basically support. Um, at this point, we've had our planning commission public hearings. This act got passed after our planning commission public hearing. And, um, Brandy found these additional ones that needed modifications, just bringing it into compliance with the statute. I mean, we have a little bit of time to do it, but it just makes sense to do it now. So if these changes are acceptable to you, like a vote from the planning commission and then we'll submit this comment to the select board at their public hearing. So that if they do vote on the amendments come July 25th, these are included.
Right. Thank you for explaining it so clearly. I had, I had read one of them, um, in general, so I, I would support whatever needs to happen to make that supported officially from us.
Right, yeah, I don't think there's much we can do. I mean, I mean, we could, for some of these, and I didn't catch that, you know, that error there, but, um, one, you know, we could say like, hey, this is actually what the bill said and you took some liberties with, with translating over this. But the ones I saw, and, you know, now that that change has been made, I mean, I didn't, I don't think I read through, you know, the ones at the end issuing a decision, but, um, maybe I did find, anyway. But it, to me, it's, it's all just pulled pretty much right from the, the law, you know, the new act. And we have to, uh, if we don't incorporate these, then we have an outdated land use regs, you know, document as soon as it's published. And it, it doesn't mean that these things don't apply, it's just it will make our document inaccurate.
Right.
So. But maybe people have, other commissioners have, have some comments to offer. If not that emotion, someone from, from Zoom wants to get their name as a motion maker on the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the proposed changes.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
Todd seconds. Great. Okay, um, I'll pause for the official Robert's Rules discussion after a motion. Seeing none, um, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Myself, Todd, Lindsay, Sarah and Dan. That's the way I do world call. Say the names. Keep your hand up and say that.
And Steve has one more to discuss.
That's right. We ready? Yeah, please, please, Steve.
Uh, so whereas those that we just heard were essentially mandatory and going to happen, whether or not we like them, uh, there is one of these that is opt-in, which is that, um, Act 47 does allow for, um, municipalities to enable their administrative officer to approve minor subdivisions. Brian and I looked very hard to try to find this state definition of minor subdivision, but we don't believe that there actually is one, um, which we could be wrong about, but that, uh, wasn't something that came up. So in our, um, land use regulations, we do have a brief definition, um, in 442A, which I have included in the memo. And, uh, essentially that would cover not more than four lots created in a 10-year period, um, without any newer substantially improved roads. Lot line adjustments or mergers that the administrative officer refused, uh, refers to the DRB, uh, which of course we would need to not, uh, include in our, we would need to play with the language on that because it's impossible for that to not be with the DRB. Uh, but in any event, um, amendments to a approved subdivision, uh, is the third category. Uh, but something that we have been referring to the DRB, that we don't have any review criteria for at the moment and will not, regardless of what the choices here from the commission, is condominium conversions of existing structures, which is something that we've seen come up twice to the DRB in the last 18 months or so. And so because that creates new property rights, so to speak, uh, that are subdivided in a way, we've been warning it as if it was a minor subdivision, um, because it was our understanding that that was required by statute. But that's something that we could now, um, be allowing the administrative officer to, uh, approve. And, um, I, I think this is probably a, um, high potential for allowing, um, flexibility for new housing production. The stats are great from California, who actually I think made this a mandatory, something similar to this, a mandatory, um, change in, in a recent state law. So, uh, I think it would be a great thing to do to support housing, particularly as we've, um, approved a few new types of, uh, small subdivisions in our proposed L U R. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, I wanna hear from all commissioners' questions if they're unclear or certainly comments and opinions and especially, um, well, especially from everyone, but especially, especially from Dan, cause he has, including myself, experience on the DRB. So this would be taking away, to just put it bluntly, taking away some powers from the DRB responsibilities, whatever word you use.
Well, it may also get to the question, uh, that, the questions that come up when we are on, we're members of both boards, whether we're alternates or, or whatever. But I, I think it's good to delineate, you know, and be comfortable on, with both of our roles and hats. But I think this is, this, this makes sense to me. But I think this is, this, this makes sense to me to do that for, partly for that reason. I guess that's kind of a question also, you know, if, if we have, if we have these dual hats on both Planning Commission and DRB, is there any guidance for that at all? But that's minor, you know, I've, I've asked questions about that before.
I think this is, um, you know, one of the kind of neat parts about having somebody that sits on both. So, you know, do you feel like, I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, right, the legislative side of it now. Do you feel that there's value in having the DRB review the minor site plans? And does that, you know, is that something that you feel should be preserved? Or do you think it's acceptable for the, for staff to, to do that? Because it's more expedient and can save money? You know, you can bring, this is, you know, perfectly fine situation to kind of bring your experience and kind of lean on that and say if you think it's a good decision or not. It was no conflict.
Yeah, I, uh, and Tom could chime in on this too, but I, I actually, I guess I'm thinking of folks who either may in the future do both boards or, you know, I'm, I'm eager to abstain, I guess you could say, you know, when, when I feel like I, you know, even have a slight, you know, conflict of interest or, you know, interest, uh, situation, interest in the situation. So, uh, you know, that, that, this might, I, I think this might actually help with, um, some of those, some of those issues. I, I know I'm being very general here, but it, I would err toward the side of having staff and, and, you know, essentially professionals, you know, look at at some of these questions. When I don't know, I tend to try to abstain or, you know, just not mention things.
I guess I'll go next because I'm on the DRB as well as an alternate. I guess three, three points. The first one is, um, I'd like to actually hear how the DRB members who, I don't know how long you've been on it, Dan, but the, the DRB members I've noticed that seem, you know, really like they've been on it a long time. You know, the chair, Maya and Nora, the vice chair, and I think Michael has, April's been on it a long time too. And the year or so that I've been on it, there's been a couple condominium approval requests. And as Steve wrote in the memo, I think they were just, there was almost nothing we could really offer on that. And it was just like, it was just almost a formality. But as far as, you know, a minor subdivision that makes two to three more lots, I feel like those three, especially people who I mentioned, could offer, you know, a wealth of experience and be like, well, actually it was really good when this was a complicated thing maybe. And we, and we could really weigh in with our varied, you know, experiences and positions. I don't, I don't really know. Like I said, I've just been on it a year and I think there's been one, well, one or two subdivisions where it was just one lot being broken into two. Yeah, so I, I, you know, I mean, it'd be nice if, if after, if we were to go to them and get comments from them and then it just convinces all of us, if all of us aren't, you know, already, that, that Steve's proposed staff proposal here is a good one. If after their comments, we, we say, okay, sure, let's pass this. It'd be unfortunate that we didn't get it into this round of land use rig changes. But I think, I think it'd be good to hear from the people who actually implement these changes. Whether, whether or not we agree with, you know, retaining this power for them after we hear their comments, I think it'd be good to see their perspective, hear their perspective. I think Dan's trying to, you.
Yeah, yeah, if I could just add a question, I don't recall when there was, when, when we had the joint meeting with DRB members, if this came up as a concern suited, no, I don't, okay. Yeah. When do we have another joint meeting scheduled with DRB?
None scheduled.
Yeah. It might, it might be worth discussing. I, uh, yeah, I, it, it is honestly, you know, it's a, uh, it's a little bit tricky for me with any of this stuff, so I tend to abstain. That's why I'm mentioning it. But, um, yeah, uh, you know, I, I think it would be worth a discussion. But, uh, but again, I, you know, it, it's kind of, um, to lower the barriers, as I think Steve is prioritizing, I'm in general all for it.
And for context, I'm realizing I don't think I've mentioned, um, there is a kind of minor subdivision that we already have delegated to the administrative officer because it was allowed by statute already, which is lot line adjustments and murders. But as we have in our existing language, even in those cases, if the administrative officer feels for some reason that that would be better reviewed by the DRB, they can still refer that. So this would be the same with, uh, if, if it were so chosen to, to delegate all minor subdivisions, the administrative officer could still defer ones where it seemed like discretionary review was, for whatever reason, more of, of the route that would be appropriate.
Are there any more thoughts before? Okay, well, staff asked that we approve the inclusion of this change in the list of other revisions. So how about that's the motion? Whether or not to approve this change to the other list that we approved.
It looks like Dan.
Yeah. Oh, Dan, you seconded? Yeah, okay. Let's do this one really roll call this time. Oh, no, no, we can do all in favor, yeah. And then whatever's next, if need be. All in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, okay, that's Todd, Sarah, Dan, and Lindsay. It passes. I am a nay. Okay. Little bit behind, but moving on to reviewing the town plan's implementation matrix. The thought here was that, um, well, the planning commission hasn't spent much time looking and talking about the town plan in at least a few years. And it seems like a good time to do it during our yearly organizational meeting. Not necessarily the whole town plan, but taking a different, you know, themed look on it. Last year, we looked at it through the lens of housing and Steve produced a good memo and analysis on that. This time, at the end of the town plan, there's a chapter called implementation matrix, where there's, I don't know, a couple or a few hundred actions, which you can see in the beginning of each of the themed chapters. And some of them are assigned to the planning commission, some are assigned to the planning services department, and sometimes there's overlap. And staff made a really good comprehensive table with some comments. Sue made this one. So I'll stop talking and shift it over to Sue.
Thanks. So I don't want to go through everything, but I guess I would preface it with, um, our town plan was amended and adopted in 2018. And I think since that time, um, the focus of the work with the planning commission has been pretty heavy on, um, the downtown plan, housing plan, walk bike action plan, and, and land use regulations. And a lot of what was in the implementation, um, chapter and a lot of the actions kind of fall within those buckets and a lot towards the bylaw or amendments. So, um, that were either done previous to this or kind of picking up now. I think some of the areas, um, you know, lots changed. The base of this plan is actually from two thousand thirteen, I think, two thousand twelve. Sorry, I don't have the date off the top of my head. So there were some actions that, you know, just over time haven't held up, such as, uh, you know, having a plan for the new market tax credit area. And then there were also some things that, um, kind of changed. You know, in the housing sector, either through funding or state regulations, rental registration and things that came up that kind of took us in a different direction. I don't know, I didn't, how, how do you all want to go through this? Do you want to ask questions? Do you want to, do you want me to pick out the areas where there really hasn't been anything done? Kind of curious.
Yeah, well.
I find it overwhelming enough. Though I've read through it once, I'd love to have guidance to, towards areas you think are, are important now, so.
I think there's a couple of areas where, you know, there hasn't been a lot of work done. I think the arts and the cultural area. Some things were assigned to the, the planning commission that, you know, I'm not really sure. The town arts committee has kind of waxed and waned over the years. There's a, a nice group together now that, that's doing some work. But I think the arts and making information about the economic impacts to the arts. You know, there was an activity of, an action of developing a list of technical resources for artists. I'm not sure that that's, you know, the best suited to the planning commission at this point. Where when it was first written, maybe the town arts committee wasn't as active. Another area, um, is the historic and cultural resources. So, um, we really haven't been able to pull off the certified local government program. That is a program where this town applies to, to be a CLG and then we're eligible for annual grants to do historic preservation work or documentation. And that's an area that we need to do a couple of things in the regulations. It's kind of, um, amend, create and/or amend the charge of the design review committee. So that's an area that, um, you know, the planning commission could help move that along. We have, um, what we did, we've, we've talked a little bit about this, but maybe it sets it up for the next conversation is, we had kind of a design review district placed over our national register of historic districts to help, you know, review development that's happening inside those national registers. We don't really have local historic districts, so that was an action that was discussed here. We might have more resources or different resources that we want to preserve. But we haven't had those conversations with the community and identified those neighborhoods. And as you know, Clark Canal Street is one of the, our national register districts and it's really more on there for its kind of settlement pattern and not unique architecture, its place in history. And so there's some mismatches there between the way that our historic regulations work. So work could be done there. You know, I feel like natural resources and land use, um, there's actually been a lot done, so. Trail work is slow, kind of creating the new trail. Work has been slow. It's, it's challenging. We don't have a lot of rail beds that have just been thrown up. There was the West River Trail, but, um, you know, it's, we haven't done a lot of work trying to move the wetstone pathway forward or, you know, projects like that could use some energy. There's been a lot that has been going on, um, with complete streets and promoting bicycle and pedestrian mobility, but it's slow. It's, the funding for that is, is a bit of a challenge, but that's obviously an area where there's a lot of momentum in town that the planning commission could, um, get involved with. Some still in the housing area. There's, um, you know, energy efficiency work. Obviously, the energy committee is doing some of that. But there's, you know, wanting to promote full solar access, which I know is something Tom has discussed and has brought up before. Building code enforcement and kind of vacant buildings. It was something I think we talked about a couple of years ago. There wasn't a lot of traction at the time. But, you know, we do have some vacant and blighted commercial and, and residential properties. That's something that could have worked done. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll take questions or I don't know where you want to move it from there, Tom.
Yeah, do things stand out to people or pique, pique commissioners, certain commissioners' interests more or questions? Lena offered that three, three comments, I think. Action five point two. And which is the one about work to provide students with safe ways to walk or bike to school in town. That one, as well as any other that fall under, I think what she wrote as safe bike head actions. She's, she's an advocate on behalf of people for that. She's also interested in the, the art ones, but I think she said it's not her forte. So I guess she has interest, but wouldn't know necessarily how to, how to move on that. And she suggested removing the like defunct ones from the list, but we can't do that until the next town plan revision, right, in a few years, so.
Yeah.
I had a question.
Yes, Lindsay.
Um, are, I'm just bringing this up now because it seems like the best place to bring it up, but maybe it's not. Are, are single resident occupancies permitted in Brattleboro?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, in certain districts.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I had looked through the bylaws and I, or the regulations, and I couldn't figure out where exactly that would be allowed, but.
They fall under other specialized residential structures, I think. Is that right? So, yeah, so if you look up SRO and the use table, it's, yeah.
It's never there in the use tables under that term. It's under other specialized, yeah. I think I had that same question about five months ago.
Yeah.
We might consider doing some advocacy, making sure people know that.
Yeah. Or an asterisk, well, you know, an asterisk there saying see definitions, but a lot of the terms are defined, but the town would seem to warrant it more than others. Anyway, we're not getting that into this land use regs amendments, I guess.
Well, we did make it easier to do an SRO.
We did make it easier to do an SRO in certain districts, yes.
Yeah.
For six point three, um, your comment was cut off. I don't know if it will change anything for us though.
Oh, my comment there, um, that was just to say, we actually got rid of the density regulations in 2021, so having density bonuses doesn't really work anymore, anyway.
Okay. I just had a couple, um, things that, you know, I thought, looking through all these comments, you know, just, I was, I was surprised and impressed with all that's actually been worked on. You know, just because one action has something that's been worked on next to it, doesn't mean, you know, good, we've accomplished that a hundred percent, but I'm still impressed that so much has been done. But was it twelve point one point three? About redevelop underutilized and vacant commercial and industrial sites. Yeah, I liked that one. I know that people bring up on Puntney Road, that big, big box store that used to be in existence. Yeah, I won't name names, but the community and sometimes even people at planning commission meetings have brought that up. And, you know, there's other smaller examples, so. And like you were saying, Sue, there was some work, maybe within the town administration or select board or something, about some sort of ordinance against vacant buildings or vacant uses. So it seems like that there is some, some interest amongst the community and different levels of government for that and, you know. and different levels of government for that, and, you know, waxes and wanes, but could help make the community more vibrant, if somehow that could be addressed successfully. And then I am intrigued about the 12.5.2, securing easements to create trails. You know, like one thought I personally had had was the, with this new property on 250, the floodplain restoration work at 250 Burge. The access, it's a pretty long property and bordered by the wetstone on one side and steep slopes mostly on the other side. And then just at one end of the skinning of the long parcel is where the actual access will be. And yes, the river and the steep slopes makes other accesses difficult, I understand, but it seems like it could be really beneficial for other people to somehow be able to get there, you know, legally than potentially going all the way around. But I think, did the downtown design plan give some ideas of some little paths or easements that?
Not, not at that property.
No, I know, but just anywhere, for example.
It was the way around, little ways to get around to walk or bike main street without doing it on main street. So kind of cutting across parking lots and cutting little segments. But it didn't, it didn't get into, you know, little trail segments or something.
Yeah, and for me, the, like you said, Sue, the historic, the historic section, where it addressed, you know, doing some work with the CLG program and reconsidering how we deal with the historic districts and the historic building preservation around that, that interests me in looking at. And I would say, you know, the arts and cultural section mainly because, not necessarily because of my interest, but because I know this community prides itself so much on that. But once again, that's also isn't my forte, and I don't think it's any commission's forte unless the commission starts getting, you know, populated by commissioners, who is their forte. But like Sue said, we have maybe waxing and waning other government committee that would seem to sit better with, who could certainly speak to us. But if there's nothing else on this just review and discussion of the town plan implementation matrix, I'd like to end it with kind of another talk, but I'm hoping a bit more conclusive than in the past meetings, with just talking about our upcoming work. Because we're kind of at a bit of a new stage. We've been focusing on housing a lot and the bylaw amendments, as well as on the housing action plan program that we did, project that we did before that. So I'd just like to really give another, another opportunity to try to dial in on what people are maybe most interested in on going forward. You know, projects, meeting topics, priorities, maybe we can focus on.
You had the memo up about this, didn't you? Or did you, I just looked.
Yeah, I did. I did have. So I mostly copied over that running list, which now some of these, you know, things we've talked about on the, in the town plan implementation matrix could be added to that. But I put things like revising the historic aspects. This organization, Local Motion, based in Burlington, but I think they do work all around Vermont, has offered to look at our, and in their opinion, approve our bicycle parking regs. People have expressed also, you know, making some changes to the automobile parking regs. There's potentially adding more green or slash environmental provisions in our regs. People spoke before at meetings about inviting individual commissions or boards or committees just to offer their ideas. There's been talk about, you know, looking at the rural districts and seeing if their actual provisions or their regs actually are in line with their stated purpose and actually, you know, do in reality what we want them to do. There was that. I remembered this request from the conservation commission about over a year ago. I added that in there. Dan, I remembered you had a comment about garages when we were looking at attached housing and garages, and you had the idea of maybe garages should be addressed in their own section. I don't, I don't know what that would look like, but, you know, I added that there. Potentially there's, there's something there. And we did all that work with the preferred solar siting subcommittee of like a year and a half ago or so, made some recommendations, some of which we've talked about. But I mean, that and the town plan implementation matrix ideas and just anything that people are, you know, come to this in their own, in their own heads. As far as interests and priorities, like, I mean, if those things look good and, you know, things have been rolling along well and productively, how the chair and staff have been together coming up with agenda items, then all's well, but. I'd like to hear if anyone feels strongly about certain. Oh, Lena offered the subject map, the themes of, she's most interested in housing, bike head concerns, and visioning for placemaking.
Do we have a central map? Any place that shows all the bike trails and walking trails currently? I've never even looked to see where it specifically stands out in maps. No?
No. There's an older conservation commission map that has a lot of the walking trails in town, but it's a bit older, I'm not sure. It was probably from like 2010, 2012.
Could figure it out pretty quick with the map, yeah.
Well, great. Oh, Dan's hands up. It's here, Dan.
Yeah, Tom, I just don't want to let that pass. I guess the comment about garages, I think specifically one thing that we might discuss at some point are, you know, there are terms of art and sort of terminology that expresses values about housing. And I think the one that you're remembering was my suggestion because snout houses are discussed, the primacy of the garage entrance on housing. And, you know, there are definitely different planning or professional opinions about that, but I just wanted to bring that up, that that was the reason that, because it seems to be an issue that we might section that off a little bit, you know, as far as comments or concerns about garage placement relative to the road. I think, and just to clarify, well, actually, Tom, you might be better to define that term for everyone who might not.
Snow housing?
Yeah, it's what you're talking about, snow houses, that's a question mark.
Yeah, I think it's where the garage door, where the front line of the garage section is more forward to the street than the rest of the building itself. So often the human door will be farther from the road than the automobile door.
Yeah.
So we address that for attached housing, but you're saying maybe other, the only other housing I can think of that where that might happen sometimes is single family and duplexes, right? And, but we don't have very many regs on those on purpose.
No, the garage door does need to be beyond, be behind the building front line.
Oh, okay.
Or flush.
Or flush, yeah. What's your?
For detached housing.
Rural and possibly rural residential are the only districts where I'm not sure that's actually something we do.
Correct. It's definitely in the residential neighborhoods, and it's one of the evaluation criterias for the neighborhood development area, actually, that you have some sort of, that you address that.
Oh, right, yeah.
So if all you have is garages on the streetscape, then, you know, creating a very pedestrian friendly.
So Dan, I don't know if, I mean, you're kind of the holder of that, of that idea from, I don't know, months or a year ago. And so I just heard the snow housing thing, and it seems like, you know, 95% it's kind of addressed.
It's already being addressed, sure.
Yeah, I think there's other issues around it. Okay.
Yep. Just wanted to pull that in, that that was the reason we.
Oh, great, yeah. Well, we can check that off the list then. It's never good just to have a list that gets bigger and bigger and bigger, right? So good to keep it manageable. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, just a suggestion, of course, not a member of the commission, but I acknowledge it would need to have some town plan tie-in, but to look at the service center moving forward and how those particularly dimensional standards could be tweaked to be more urbanist or more smart growth oriented if we want to see housing up there. I know that's something that we couldn't really touch with this particular project, but it would probably suit us to prioritize doing that over the next, however long it takes to do that right by the town plan.
What was the other rate you say? You said to be more urbanist or?
Oh, smart growth oriented, traditional redevelopment, whatever, pick your poison.
Yeah, sure. Well, great. Can we just see Sarah's comment? I mean, it must have been something that needed to sign off.
Oh, yeah, she had, the baby was crying to sign off.
Well, I won't add crying to the list, although that's a type of comment.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to end early. But we have to do the public comment period, which happens to be at the end of the meeting in this agenda, and no public here. So it's the end of the public comment period, and we've completed our business. So if there's nothing else, then.
Oh, adjourned?
Well, I can adjourn us.
Oh, let it go.
With all the business complete, the meeting's adjourned. As simple as that.
Awesome.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.